effort they invest to make our community a better place. Please grant them encouragement, rest, and rejuvenation as they balance their demanding schedules and overwhelming responsibilities. May you redeem their time and give them the clarity to focus on what matters most, and may their families always know they are their greatest concern. As these are leaders conduct business today, please bless them with wisdom and discernment to know and do what is right. You have given us a whole book in the Old Testament to show us what happens when everyone does what is right in their own eyes. So may all of us today, as leaders and followers, take heed to the wise counsel of our 16th and 40th Presidents, and be more concerned about being on your side than trying to convince you to be on our side. So, Lord, we end this prayer where we began. Thank you for our city leaders. May the things for which we've prayed be theirs in abundance. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McHenry. Thank you, sir. Thank you, no problem. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Ainge.
Here.
Mayor Protim Thelshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Peyton Appson. Councilmember Samuel.
Oh, he's present.
And Councilmember Mouton.
Present.
Is that me?
There's a background.
Oh. Okay. Oh, that's better. Is it? Yeah, okay, yeah, that's better. Thank you. Yep. Okay, so we have no presentations and no proclamations today, so I will move right into public comment. Now would be the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comment on the consent agenda or scheduled agenda items, no scheduled agenda items because they were all heard in public hearings, so that would be open for the consent agenda only. If you would like to speak on one of the items on the consent agenda and you haven't already done so, please hand a green slip. Is there anybody in the back, officer?
No, there's not.
There's not? Okay, since there's no one in the back, I will just ask if anyone in here wants to speak and you haven't already done so, please hand the green slip to the city clerk. She will call out your name. We would appreciate if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up.
No one?
No one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, since there's no one, council, may I have a motion, please, on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's none, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Item number one, please.
Mayor and council, item number one, we actually have two ordinances. I'll read the first is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas by changing the zoning of approximately 6.7 acres of property presently zoned GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district, to LI, light industrial district, and approximately 30.58 acres of property presently zoned RS, residential, single-family dwelling district to GCMD II, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling II district for property located at the northeast corner of East Tex Freeway and Chin Lane, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. The second ordinance is entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow an outside lay-down yard and fleet maintenance facility in an LI light industrial district and a GCMD II, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling II district for property located at the northeast corner of East Tex Freeway and Chin Lane, the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Entergy has purchased the property and would like to relocate their offices, their fleet maintenance, and outside storage to this property. Had a joint public hearing held on September the 21st, the Planning Commission recommended seven to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. And I understand, Councilman Neal, do you need to abstain from the discussion and the vote on this item?
Correct.
Okay, so, council, is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved for approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? There seem to be none. All in favor of the motion for approval? I guess we need to do the zone change first.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So, who made that motion? Was it you?
I did.
Okay, so are you okay with making the zone change? And then we'll, okay?
I so moved for approval of the zone change.
Thank you.
And second.
Second on the zone change. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention by Councilmember Neal. Is there a motion on the specific use permit?
I so moved for approval of the specific use permit associated with that.
Thank you.
And second.
There's a motion and a second for the specific use permit approval. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Item number two, please.
Is there an abstention on that one, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, on both items, yes.
Mayor and council, item number two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending chapter 28 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, and in particular, the boundaries of the zoning districts as indicated upon the zoning map of Beaumont, Texas by changing the zoning of property presently zoned RS, residential, single-family dwelling district to RMM, residential, multiple-family dwelling, medium-density district for property located at the northwest corner of Mater Road and Betsy Lane, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Helbig Community Development Corporation has requested the rezoning. A tentative site plan provided by the applicant indicates that they wish to construct a multifamily development at this location. At a joint public hearing held on September the 21st, the Planning Commission recommended seven to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. Council, you have heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion on this item, please?
Make a motion. Second.
There's a motion for approval and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries unanimously. Next item, number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a short-term foster home in an RCRH, residential conservation revitalization historic district for property located at 2406 Broadway Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. A joint public hearing held on September the 21st, the Planning Commission recommended seven to zero to approve the request for a specific use permit. We recommend approval as well.
Thank you. Council, you have heard the reading of number three. Is there a motion on this item, please?
So moved.
There's a motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Who seconded that motion, please? Councilmember Neal.
Thank you.
Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow the expansion of an alcohol and drug rehabilitation facility in the RMH, residential, multiple-family dwelling, highest-density district for property located at 950 Washington Boulevard, city Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Shalom Healthcare Management has requested an amended specific use permit. A joint public hearing held on September the 21st, the Planning Commission recommended seven to zero to approve the request with two conditions that are stated in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same two conditions.
Thank you. Council, you have heard the reading of item number four. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Thank you, and that includes the conditions, correct?
With the conditions.
All right, thank you. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? None? The motion passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor and council, item number five is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow retail facility and condominiums in a GCMD II, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling II district for property located at 50, I'm sorry, 4515 North Major Drive in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Fugnat Lee is requesting an amended specific use permit to allow, again, retail and condominiums. The proposed development would consist of 17 condominiums and approximately 23,000 square feet of retail space. A joint public hearing held on September the 21st, the Planning Commission recommended seven to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. Council, you have heard the reading of number five. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, where Northwest Parkway ties into North Major Drive, I know there's been some talks about a traffic light there. I struggle with allowing another highly populated condominium being built there without us moving forward with a traffic light. Can you give us an update on that?
Yeah, I think the traffic light is up to Tech Dot. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
So, we did run it by them probably a year ago, and so, you know, we can make that request again, but it's up to them to approve or not.
They're doing a corridor study for all major drives, and when that study's finished, then they're going to come back with recommendations of whether we do anything in Village or Northwest Parkway, but they're looking at the entirety of Major, what as a, not just for now, but for future, to try to plan for what should go in now and what should go in going forward so that it gets adjusted. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Getz.
You know, I have also expressed concern about the need for a traffic light on this portion of Major, and if I recall correctly, the city did a warrant study of its own a few years back, and the indication came back that the volume of traffic on that stretch of road warranted a traffic light, and I think we were set to go on that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Tech Dot stepped in and said, no, that's, that's our roadway, and we need a traffic light, we'll put it there, but that seems contra to a previous agreement that we had made with Tech Dot to install traffic lights on their roadways within our city limits. So I'm a little confused as to how this works. Could you elaborate a little bit on that? Do, I mean, I know it's Tech Dot's road, it's within the city limits of Beaumont. We have that agreement with Tech Dot that says that the city of Beaumont's going to put traffic lights on their roads, but I guess Tech Dot can step up and say, no, not without our agreement. Is that about it?
That's our understanding.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item? There's a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next item, we don't have another item, but we do have a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, every year, the city of Beaumont submits what is called a CAPR. It's a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and HUD requires that a public hearing be held on the CAPR, and we'd ask that you hold the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. I'll now open the floor for a public hearing as read. I understand there's no one in the back, so if there's anyone here that would like to speak on that item, please let me know. Seeing no one, the floor is now closed. Before we move to public comment, I would like to read that at the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with section 551.071 of the Government Code, Southern Choice Consulting LLC versus City of Beaumont, cause number A-205, comma, 533, consider matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer, employee, or employee in accordance with section 551.074 of the Government Code to it, specifically Kyle Hayes, city manager, and Tyrone Cooper, city attorney. And now we'll open up the floor for any citizen who wishes to speak. Is there anyone in our audience who would like to speak today? Okay, there appears to be no one, so I'll close the floor, and I will start with you. Please, Councilmember Mouton, if you have anything for us.
I would just like to say, on Sunday, I was privileged to be with the, pray Beaumont. We didn't have a big turnout like we normally do, but for those that came out, we were able to ride the perimeter of Beaumont and pray for our entire city, and I would encourage everyone and every church to, to get involved next year. It's a great event, and when you can pray for your entire city. So that's all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Two things. One is, that was a request made by some of the residents on Steve Drive for the city of Beaumont to adopt that particular right of way. It's a private street, and they're asking that it be taken in as a public street. I've mentioned it to staff, and I appreciate, I'd appreciate letting you know how that goes as we move forward with that, if there are any complications or anything. I did receive a petition with all of the residents on that. If it's needed, I'll submit that to you. And secondly, I received a concern by a resident that lives at 3695 Audrey Street, and it's concerning overgrown lots across the street from him. I did go by, and the property has weeds growing over the curve onto the street, and right now, the weeds are about, probably about four to five feet high, so that's a real concern. At one time, whoever it was, they were keeping the property, but in recent times, there's been no one doing upkeep on the property. He's assuming that the property owners have changed, so I'd appreciate a report back on that. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protim?
No comment, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Neal?
No comment, thank you.
Councilman Getz?
Thank you, mayor. I recently discovered an attorney general opinion that was issued this year that talks about the city's ability to enforce restrictive covenants that may run with the land when people buy property that are recorded in the county clerk's office. For the 10 years that I've been on city council, I've been told that that's a matter between the private parties, and while that is true, I was also previously told that the city doesn't have the ability to enforce these restrictive covenants. So I was curious as to why the attorney general might feel that the city can enforce restrictive covenants, and these are important because, for instance, in the Dallin West neighborhood, which is in the ward that I serve, all of those properties, when you buy a house in Dallin West, are encumbered with restrictive covenants, and some of those restrictive covenants address things like building fences in your front yards, parking boats in your front yards, having certain kinds of livestock on your property. So it's always been up to the homeowners to enforce violations of those, is what I've been told in the past. I sent an email to the city manager advising of the attorney general's opinion with copies to the city attorney, and I would appreciate response from the city attorney as to whether or not it will be possible moving forward for the city to enforce these, because I'm starting to see more and more violations of these restrictive covenants, and, you know, when you buy a property in a neighborhood, you buy it assuming that those restrictive covenants are going to be obeyed, and individuals frequently don't have the wherewithal or the money to go to court to enforce them, but they should be enforced, and if the city has the ability to do so, I would like to see us do that. So with that being said, I'm looking forward to a response on that. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
I'm glad to get you one, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that the two new council members have been made aware of these opinions that have been given over the past, but the question becomes, does the city have the ability to enforce deed restrictions? And what I have known and learned in the municipal law is that the city does not. Reason being is because those restrictions are a contract between that property owner and either the developer or the subsequent property owners, and it does run with the land. So if you have a property with deed restrictions, there is a, either a homeowners' association or a property owners' association who can enforce those deed restrictions, and as property owners within a subdivision, you can also assist in enforcing those. The city is not a party to that contract. The attorney general's opinion that he refers to starts off by saying that, that that is a private contract between private parties. Nowhere in that opinion does it cite to any case law that says otherwise. There is a provision in the law that gives the city of Houston, well, actually gives cities with a population of 1.5 million or more, the ability to enforce deed restrictions. Of course, we all know, city of Houston is not zoned, so that law was allowed to, were given to allow them to enforce deed restrictions. They also have homeowners' association in the city of Houston who enforces those. While we all know that we're a home rule municipality, and we can do whatever a city chooses to do, except if the legislature says we cannot do. What the legislature has said, and what contract law has said, is that we do not have standing to interfere in a private property owner's dispute, which deed restriction enforcement would be. So I stand on the opinion that cities don't have, well, cities like Beaumont don't have the ability to enforce deed restrictions.
Thank you.
Mayor, this isn't a posted agenda item, so I'm not going to continue this discussion here. I will say that's not what General Paxton's opinion says, so.
Well, and as we all know...
Mayor, this is out of order, and it's not a posted agenda item to discuss right now. The city attorney knows that. He just doesn't want to do his job, so.
I'm not talking to him, mayor. I am giving a statement of fact, which the Open Meetings Act allows me to do.
That is true.
As we all know, attorneys differ on their opinions. The attorney general is an attorney just like any other attorney in the state of Texas. His opinions have no binding effect whatsoever in a court of law, and as I indicated, if he had cited to some case law that would persuade me to change my opinion, I would consider it and look at it. He has not.
You mean the attorney general?
The attorney general. Like I say, he's an attorney just like any other.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have anything else, city attorney, other than, I was just going to, I mean, I mean about, I was, I usually call on you and the city manager at the end, so.
Yeah. Well, and if the council is interested in enforcing private deed restrictions, I will certainly look at it.
Okay.
And the basis of his request was, he said that some, some neighbors in Dallin West have built fences in their front yards, and I believe he has a fence built in his front yard, so.
Thank you. City manager, you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I don't live in the Dallin West subdivision. I'm not bound by that same deed restriction, so.
Okay, thank you. I have deed restrictions in my neighborhood, but I won't talk about it right now. Okay, I have a few things that are, I think that a lot of our citizens may be interested in. Please note that the 2020 census will end field data collection and self-response options tomorrow. That's Wednesday, so anyone listening, or if you know anyone that may not watch our meetings, or that doesn't pay close attention to the news or social media, if they're, would you please get in touch with them and let them know that the census ends tomorrow, and we very much need every single person that is available, that lives here to fill out the census. It's important to us in so many ways, representation, funding, funding that helps our city move forward and our citizens move forward. So please, if you have not filled out the census, or if you know someone who may not have filled out the census but are, that should have, you can respond via internet, telephone, or by mail. The website is 2020census.gov, G-O-V, 2020census.gov, and there are phone numbers listed on that website for English speakers and Spanish speakers. The English speakers is 844-330-2020, and Spanish speakers, 844-468-2020. Again, all that information is available on 2020census.gov. The last day to respond, whether it be in person, if someone visits your home, or by the internet, or by telephone, or by mail, is tomorrow, Wednesday. So please, I'm asking that anyone listening, please help us with this, because we are lower than we would like to be, and we actually need your assistance in any way that you can help us. Another item of interest is household hazardous waste collection event. There is a flyer, and it has been put on our City of Beaumont website, but it's also on the Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission website, which is www.setrpc.org, www.setrpc.org. That hazarded waste collection event, we have had quite a few calls on this, because you can bring, it's a car batteries, used oils, brake fluid, gardening supplies, tires, batteries, it's just anything that you shouldn't be putting in your trash, and you can bring to this collection event. It is on October the 24th, so it's about a month away, October 24th, from 8:00 to 1:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Bridge City Intermediate School parking lot. That's 1029 West Realm Bunch Road in Bridge City. I talked about Lemonade Day for our young entrepreneurs. That's put on by the Beaumont Children's Museum and this Chamber of Commerce and others. If you have a child that's interested in entrepreneurship, please, there is a drive-through today, today, from 4:00 to 6:00, and that is at the Energy Museum parking lot, which is right over here by our civic center on the north parking lot. Also mentioned last week, but this continues, COVID-19 community testing sites are this week. There are many other sites that you can be tested and that do not charge, but this is a community testing site put on by the state, and it's all week from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Crystal Ray Church, 767 Avenue A. No appointment is needed to receive testing. We do continue to put out our COVID-19 report each day, and it's been anywhere from the low teens to the mid-teens, so we have scooted up just a little bit, but not anything to cause alarm as of yet. So, you know, we're ranging around 13 to 14 positive cases a day, maybe a little less than that, some days it's seven, but some days it's 16 or 17. So we're averaging around that amount. So if you know anyone that needs to be tested, please give them Crystal Ray Church all week, this week, Monday through Friday, so it's going on today, and it'll be on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday for the rest of this week, at Crystal Ray Church from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Again, no appointment is necessary. And I did read that we do have an executive session, so I have, yes, sir, go ahead, please.
Yes, mayor, I just wanted to get some clarity... I just wanted to get some clarity. It was my understanding from the news on yesterday that over half of the United States are showing increase in the COVID rates. I just wanted to... are you aware of... is that true or untrue?
I saw that news report. I don't have any confirmation of that. In Texas, as far as we do get, we have state calls, and we have emails from the state, and there are some places that are hot spots, but I've not heard that from the nation. But I did hear that news report.
It did show on the news report that the state of Texas is one that's on the increase, and I wasn't certain how much of an increase and how that impacted Jefferson County. But I think it's important that we continue to let folks know that this is not over.
Yes.
We're in the midst of an increase, and people need to be aware. I don't know what the remedy is. I went to a restaurant, and no one in the restaurant had masks, and they say it's okay when you're in the restaurant and you're socially distant, but I'm not certain that that is happening. So I don't want to be a part of a body that says everything is okay. I think we need to make sure people understand we're still in the midst of a pandemic.
Yes, you're right. And I should have said that, because we did last week, as you know. We still have to keep... we can't let our guard down, and you're right. As far as the restaurants are concerned, as I understand it, I did check, as I mentioned last week, when I had a conversation with the state, that as far as a restaurant, you are supposed to wear it in. You are supposed to keep it on at your table unless you have food or drink in front of you. If you get up to go to the restroom, or get up to move around the restaurant in any way, shape, or form, you're supposed to put it back on. And if people aren't doing that, obviously, it falls on our restaurant... restaurateurs to enforce that, but I don't think it's out of line to ask, you know, the manager if that's... if you're seeing something other than that, because that is what is supposed to happen in restaurants. And bars are supposed to be social distance. Bars inside restaurants, as you know, bars still aren't open, so... and they are still supposed to be... well, restaurants, I believe, went to 75%. So they're still not supposed to be completely full. But thank you for bringing that up. I should have mentioned, please don't let our guard down. Continue to wear your mask. Continue to social distance. As I said, ours were running around, oh, anywhere from three to 10 a day, maybe some... a lot of fours and fives, and we did have a day of 17 recently, and we've had some tens and thirteens, but we've also had some sixes and some sevens. But we're continuing to monitor, and we will continue to monitor, and if I see a change, I certainly will bring it to the council. In addition, I am still talking to the hospitals and the physicians about any rise in any concerns that the hospitals may have, or taking care of those patients. Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So that's all I have. So thank you all for coming. We will now recess into executive session.